I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic like for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jason, for the second, we get organized. The other minutes from the last meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look at them? Looks like the wrong ones might have got put in the package.
On the agenda. One packet, they were right online though.
Yeah. Just in the back if they weren't.
Oh, there was a set of meeting minutes that somebody wanted on there.
Oh, that's what it is, probably then.
Yep, yep. I didn't put the meeting minutes in that packet, I just put them online.
Gotcha. Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting?
No objections, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Do I have a second? Second? Moved by Dave, second by Paul. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next item is presentation of the bills. Is there any questions on the bills?
The question I had was that Trail County Treasurer threw twenty-four and six thirty.
So, that was a request from Trail County. Since it was leaned against them to make sure the lien comes off, that was the payment that Bill had made. So it'll go to the county, and they'll turn around and write us a check back in our taxes, so... It's just showing that those, half of those taxes were paid.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Next item is commissioners' reports. We'll start with Jason tonight, if you have anything.
Um, I do not.
Okay. Nicole?
Uh, the only thing I have is regarding the lead and copper replacement. I just had a few questions on that, um, from others, and some of them said, "Well, I already replaced all the copper to the pecs." Um, this is if you go into the survey, it'll show you the actual water meter. It's the, the, um, tube that goes, it connects to the water meter. So that's what we need to look at for in these homes. If you log into the survey, um, enter in your account information, it'll show you the picture, and it'll tell you exactly where. There's an arrow that tells you this is the piece to look at, so... Just in case anyone outside, you know, the others that have already asked. It'll, it'll show you that in there. Um, but other than that, um, that's, that's the only questions I've had, and I'll have to report.
The one I had on there was businesses are included, and I assume the answer is it's everybody, correct?
Yes, um, businesses have received them if the building is prior to nineteen eighty. Yep.
Okay. Dave?
Uh, the only thing I have is the city guys are out trying to patch holes in between small dorms, so... You haven't been getting anything about this. That's all I have.
Okay. Paul?
Nothing, for me.
For me, I think Paul filled in most of the stuff that we talked about at beautification and, and planning and zoning. They're still working on a few things. Should have more for you at the next meeting, because they wanted to go back and revisit on those.
Storage containers.
On the storage containers. They wanted to make sure they had a correct answer for you, and how to make it work, so... And I know JR was working on a few things for them as well, so... JR, do you have anything for tonight?
Nothing for me.
Casey?
Um, not a lot from me. Um, the only thing that I was hoping to show you guys was inventory, but it's not wanting to load, so, um, inventory should be done by the end of the month, so... Yep.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Jason, anything from Sheriff?
No, sir.
All right, uh, nothing from... The only thing that I had seen from Steve that he just mentioned is that we have a meeting on Thursday to talk about the bridge. Did you hear about that?
That's an online meeting.
Yep, so, just to see the progress from Dale, okay on that?
And, uh, we linked sent the ball and to everybody, because I think they only sent it to you and me if they wanted to join, you know, on the Congress.
If we did that, then it would be a public meeting?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Yes, you guys can. We'll let you, we'll let you.
I'm not hard. I think I gotta mouth watch.
The beautification, I know that some of those are, the charges are coming up to court, so we'll keep you updated on those as we get closer. We'll go into old business. We have two bids for the mowing contracts. First one is from Manthes, and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars per year. They're good. Second bid is from Mowls. And their bid is, it's from Simon and Olivia Luke Mowls. And their bid is for twelve thousand per year, and they also requested to ask the Commissioners assistance in enforcing the guidelines of the cemetery's rulebook, such as flowers, et cetera, as they don't get removed after Memorial Day, and make trimming and mowing extra difficult. These flowers and decorations are very hard to mow around, especially as the year goes on and they start to fall apart. Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have policies in place for the flowers?
I believe so.
Yep.
I haven't seen them, but I believe there is policies. Do we have a motion to accept or reject any of the bids?
Make a motion, we accept the motion for Mowls for twelve thousand dollars, and work with them on the flowers.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Paul to accept the bid for twelve thousand from Mowls. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. Next item is the garbage RFP. Has everybody had a final look at that, and if you're okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Do we have a motion then to approve and move it forward?
I'll make a motion.
I should ask clarifying question. Did we have a date set on there? Since we pushed it. Is it still July first? Okay.
Uh, no, they're than four-thirty on Monday, July first.
I just couldn't remember if we had it earlier. So Dave made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jason. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. Next item, uh, Paul had talked about a two-dollar charge for streetlights, add it on, if you want to talk a little bit more about it.
Now, this was brought up to me of, of, uh, other city, uh, used to replace streetlights. Uh, they set up an account for that. Uh, the last couple of meetings, we talked about it. I asked the Commissioners to talk to people and get their input on it. Uh, anybody, talked to anybody, yes, no, or indifferent?
Do we know what the cost, or what revenue we generate from it?
Yeah, she had it in here, I don't remember off the top of my head.
It'd be just under twenty-one thousand, if you did. Eight-hundred and seventy bills went out this last month, uh, two dollars a bill, times twelve months is just under twenty-one thousand, if bills stay at eight-seventy. Right, Sarah? Yep. Sarah was my number person for that one.
So Paul, just, is, is it just the electrical, the wiring in the streetlights? It's not very, it's not, we don't need, we don't need to replace the, the up, the uprights and everything?
It's just the electrical, and then they need painting or replacing, depending upon how bad they are. So, this would be mainly to set up a fund that we could basically earmark that's what it's for, for streetlight replacement as, or repairs. Uh, we have a lot of issues with wiring, and there's probably, I don't know, five to ten streetlights that didn't, not streetlights, but, uh, Christmas decorations that they can't even, they can plug them in, but there's no power. It's gonna be a matter of, you know, getting, getting power to them. So they all work. Some of them, Jim says they're, they're showing their years, just like everything, so...
And we've changed a lot of them to LED?
Yep, yep.
Do we have any idea of, what was it, a thousand or something, to paint, repaint? Is that what?
Yeah, I think it's been a couple of years since I've asked on that. I think we brought eight hundred dollars for one. But I, don't quote me on that, I'll have to go back and look, so... Well, he comes with, so we gotta have traffic control, obviously. They gotta completely wrap, wrap where they're working, and the Samba, so... The way he was explaining to me, it was quite, quite involved, so it's, you know, it's, if, if people want to do it, it's, it's a way to, a way to start that. You know, we can always, we can always take it out of another fund, electrical, but we're gonna have a lot of stuff there too, so... It just depends on how you want, how you want to do it. This was just suggestive, uh, ways other, another town does it, so...
Thoughts from everybody?
I, I thought we, I kinda liked the idea, but I didn't think it was, if we could do it for a year or two or something, and then it seemed like we get caught up on this, and then we could kinda drop it, you know?
And I could get more.
Maybe that sounds kind of...
And we can get, I can get more updated, you know, in far as the price to get them painted and, and things like that. I could sure get more prices on it if you want, that's not a problem.
Well, and should we take an inventory of what we need to do to start with? Would that be a starting point to? What needs to be replaced, what needs to be repainted, which would maybe be repaired? Because some of them are steel poles, some of them are...
Uptoned floors, these steel poles and everything.
Okay. Okay. Start with that. Next item then is adding a Public Works labor tool for the city. You guys had kinda talked about that, correct? So there is one that was forwarded on, and I know we had a couple of employees talk to me about it, that they know that was looking, and he had submitted his application before we had even opened it up, or did any of those things. So, I don't know if that's something you guys wanted to look into, or if you want to open up the position. I assume this would be for, um, looking at John's replacement eventually down the road.
Well, we should get somebody in there fairly quick. My feelings are anyway. I think if we got somebody that's can do the job, then we should look at it.
I believe the person that, um, had submitted had wa- wastewater and water treat, wastewater, if I remember right, and I want to say water treatment as well.
I think so. So that's some prior experience as well.
Um, and had some construction work with Rydenbach that one time, so... If you guys feel that you want to move forward, um, if you want to open it up, or if you want to go off of that application, that's totally up to you guys, but we can start that process then. Let's see if Jim is willing to introduce some interviewing, and then also anyone else down at Public Works to help out with that. But it would be good if we have an applicant. As you know, we're, we still have not received applicants on the other positions, so...
We've got a part of this that's got water treatment experience, some equipment operator. The rest of it, he can, you know, he's never plowed snow, he can, he can learn.
I believe he's working for another city, so I would assume there's some experience there.
Just trying to find people now is...
Yeah.
Yep.
Can we have, uh, can we have Jim, would Jim have time to interview him and get some feedback and make recommendations?
I can, but I just want to make sure that you guys want to move forward with something. If you want to have him look at that one, or if you want him to open it up as well, I just need to know what direction you guys want to go.
I'm okay with Jim interviewing, if that's...
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I think we need to get somebody in there. If you've got somebody with experience, let's work with them and see how he does.
Do we have a motion then to?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by, moved by Dave, seconded by Nicole to interview the applicant that we have for the Public Works, for Public Works? Is there any other discussion on it? Is there a question, or you're just? It wasn't true. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And a yes for me. Motion carries. All right, well, that kinda falls into the next few things. Recruiter info, you guys have gotten that, that, um, I had received. And these were all people that reached out to me, there was none that I looked out to. The cyber quota one was one from before, that we had, they had, uh, sent us an application when we did the auditor's position. And the other one reached out through word of mouth that heard that we had an opening from Halsted's. The one from Halsted, the way it looks is that we would have to have a fee upfront, and then it's, both of them are twenty-five, about twenty-five percent of the salary, the first year salary.
So there's two of them that reached out?
Two of them that reached out, yep.
And each one's twenty-five percent?
Cyber quotas was different, that only if we hired the person that they gave us.
The other one was twenty-five percent upfront?
There was a certain fee upfront. I don't know if you guys want to hold off, since we just got onto the...
Zip recruiter?
Zip recruiter, yep. And the other ones, we can reach out to other individuals that are on, we just gotta do that. Do you guys want to hold off on recruiting at this time?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Referral program for finding employees?
Yeah, I visited a little bit with Casey about this, you know. When I was in, when I was in the military, they had, they had, you could do referrals, you know, for, uh, for new members. I thought, well, would that be something that we could put out to the citizens of Hillsborough and give a referral, you know, get referrals, and, you know, we're talking, we're talking about looking at twenty-five percent of the first year salary, you know, is there a way we could do some type of referral, where you'd have, you know, for, do similar to what, what other businesses do. Uh, would that be something, it wouldn't cost us anything until we hired somebody? We're spending a lot of money on other areas to help get people. Would that be something that maybe would be a benefit? You know, we got, now we have, if everybody in the community knows it, we have, you know, we have hundreds of people looking, not just a few, you know? So if we got, you know, if somebody has a friend, or a neighbor, or a family member or something that they may know, maybe that might be enough to get them to call in and, uh, question about it. Uh, exactly what that dollar amount would be, I'd, I'd no idea, you know, I'd probably, I'd probably suggest at least a thousand dollars, you know, so...
JR, are we able to do that? That's my first question.
I would say yes, I mean, in the sense of, I don't know why not. It's just like I have a recruiter for these, they'd have to be tax forms you fill out, just the same as paying for these recruiters, but, yes.
And then, are we gonna exclude any individuals? For example, I would, I still know you wouldn't want to include Commissioners on, on it. And would you include city staff or non-city staff?
I think that on that sample that we got, there was some of that listed there.
You know, I've had past employers that have actually given it to employees to recruit to their companies, so...
I don't think it's a bad idea, it's just making sure that we set it up right. If it's a city resident, could you do it through their, a bill credit? I can get more out that way than if it was a non-resident?
We could look at the verbiage of it, I guess, and kinda come up with something, huh? Somebody? That was more legal expertise than me, so...
Well, what kinda parameters would you guys like? Because I think we need some some non-commissioners. Does the referral come in on the application?
I don't think you would list two who have referred you.
So that's how whoever's listed on the referral? Can there be more than one, and they have to split it?
I would think just the one that they list on the application.
Well, if they listed two, are you gonna?
I don't know, tell them they can list one.
They can only list one.
They can, they can split amongst themselves.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep. I think they pay out different, at different stages too, right on?
That's how the sample is. Three months, six months, and one year.
So would you? How much, and when? Well, I mentioned, just because you get, that's what they have, but is that what you guys? Do you want, because Paul said start at a thousand, so...
Yeah, I, that's just a number I threw out, if you, if you, is it enough to move the meter? I don't, I don't know. If it's enough to move the meter or not, so...
I suppose it'd be either credit, or if it's paid out, it'd be full amount?
I just thought if it was a bill credit, it'd be less tax forms to fill out.
Getting my beret in there, it's the taxation part.
So would it be just hillsboro resident, or if you do a bill credit?
Or you could do Hillsborough resident, and if a non-Hillsborough resident doesn't, then you can, or non- utilities person? Say, two fifty, two fifty, five hundred for a non-utility person, and five hundred, five hundred, and a thousand for utilities person? Up to you guys, I'm just throwing out numbers. Two thousand dollars on your electrical or water bill, if you could incentivize.
Yeah. I, you know, I, I'm, I'm all for that too, I don't like, there's a, you know, I don't know if I'd go over too, but I would go up to it, just because we're, we're looking for somebody, and, uh, yes, that's gonna cost us, but if we can find somebody, the thing is, it doesn't cost us anything if we don't get anybody, you know, so...
Four thousand is cheaper than twenty-five thousand.
Right. And, uh, I guess I would look at this, we would base this, I, I think we need to base this on, on, on certain, you know, like right now, we'd have it on lineman, and, and then the superintendent. I don't think we would have it on, you know, I guess you can, if you want to put it on pool manager, or all the other openings we have. You could put it on there, but it seems like those are the two we're really having a, a big, big issue trying to track down right now, is those two jobs, so...
You could say any position that's been open for more than a month? Without applicants?
I think I'd give it a little more than a month.
I'm just...
Yeah, I, I understand, that's why I'm saying that, so, I don't know, what, what do you guys think?
I think it's hard to pay anything off at all, myself.
What was that bid?
I just, be paying money out to... Yeah, it's, it's a whole new deal to me, I've never seen this before, so... But if you can get candidates, I guess, it's not a bad thing, it just means...
Well, it would be a...
It's pretty common.
If the person wasn't employed.
You'd only get it if they were employed.
Right, yep.
So would be every person referred, it'd just be the one that...
Just be the one, yeah.
That got hired?
We don't need to move on anything tonight, cause we'll, I'll work with JR and we'll draft something up for next meeting. But is the two thousand where you wanna be, or is it fifteen hundred? I just, we just need to know some parameters so we can put it in. Do you want it separate for...
I kinda like what's written up there, except I don't know if I agree with the two fifty, you know, at higher, cause when you get hired, you take the two fifty, you get two fifty and they leave right away. So I like the, like the six month, and then years a good time. Or split it into two instead of three?
So maybe three, six, and one year, like three, six, and twelve, maybe?
Yeah, something like...
I like how it's listed, I like how it's laid out too, but I would say maybe three months, six months, one year.
Yeah.
Well, the next payroll would be their first payroll, which would be a month in.
It'd be a month, yeah.
So it'd be one, six, and a year.
Or you could do three, six, and a year, like you said, too.
Right, or you knew that.
Three months, you kinda have a good idea of those they're gonna be working on.
Cause that's kinda...
We just need to know the parameters so that we can try to draft it for years.
I would be okay with the three and six.
Three, six, and twelve, and then the amount, do you have a preference?
I kinda like the amounts listed, but I don't know if that's gonna be enough to help a lot, you know?
Yeah, I don't know, what's gonna make anybody...
I mean, to me, a thousand would be, make me kinda think of people, but...
Or could, would you say two fifty, five hundred, and five hundred?
Meet you in the middle a little ways, I guess.
Or seven, or two fifty, five hundred, and seven fifty? I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas, so that's fifteen hundred. Guess if you don't get anybody, you can always raise it.
You can always raise it, you know? I, I don't know, I guess, I guess I'd be okay starting with a thousand, it's just a matter of adjusting, you know, into two fifty, and then three, and two fifty, and six, and then five hundred. Start there unless...
So start with a thousand? And is it for anybody? Just resident?
Are you asking for positions or...
No, for...
I think it's like employee and residence or...
If somebody from Farquhar said, hey, I got somebody for you, they'd be eligible for it?
Then you would...
Or do you wanna do... Right, so that's, do you wanna do a thousand for anybody or fifteen hundred for residents?
If you don't go out of the Hillsborough, you're not gonna get anybody, really, so...
No, we're talking people, not, not employee, not...
Yep, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, if you just limit it to Hillsborough.
I'm just thinking that if you incentivize for the residents.
I guess when I originally thought of it, it was the residents that I was thinking of, and it would be something to help get the Hillsborough residents to, to be part of this process, so to speak, so, but it's not gonna change my, my way or not, but that was my first ever thought of, the residents.
Do you wanna start with just for residents?
I'd be okay with that.
Maybe we'll draft one, JR, with both, just in case.
And then going back to which employees? I, I don't know.
So obviously...
Full-time, a full-time employee, you know, maybe, it's like you said, I don't know if a month is enough time to give it out there or not, I think I would probably go a little longer on that.
Well, and you don't have to, the policy could be just when the commission decides that we're gonna use this as a tool. It doesn't have to be all the time.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to, if you wanted to do that.
We could look at it, we could just say when the commission approves, what commission approves to instate it.
I'm fine with that.
And hiring supervisors along with commissioners would be out? Anybody else would be in? Anything else on that? Alright, we'll work on that. Next is the pool grant. So on that, I just need direction, how you guys want to move forward, if we want to move forward and try to get somebody in to get it done, how we have that money until the end of twenty-five? It's a hundred and fif- just shy of a hundred and fifty thousand, and it's a match, so we would put in a hundred and fifty, they match up to that amount, I think it's a, it's just shy of one fifty.
How were things last, how were things last year on, or, we're not leaking as much?
We're, we're not leaking as much, but it's also not...
And the, and the kiddie pool wasn't open because of lifeguards, or is that ready to be opened, or...
Kiddie pool needs to get flushed out, what we were, so um there was still mud and junk left in there from previous years, and so if we flushed it, it would put all that muck back into the system, which the last time we did it, we hadn't, if you remember last year, we ended up draining it and refilling it to get it clean. So that was the afraid, that if we did that, we were gonna shut it down for another two weeks.
And what was all, what all was, could the grant be used for, was there any specifics?
It's for the piping outdoor part of it, and there's also to replace the slide, and all the inlets and outlets, and the um ballast tank. So all new piping around into the pump house, inlets, outlets around the pool, new ballast tank, and then um putting more valves in so that we can shut off and isolate it a little bit better.
And how much of that stuff do you think can get done for, for what price? Or no till you bid it or something?
We don't know till we bid it. And we've worked with A E two S to help with that, the process of it. They're the ones that have put it all together for us in the beginning.
I hear from residents both ways. Some people say get it fixed up to use a little bit, and some people say don't put in any more money, so it doesn't really help me from that standpoint, because we have both parts looking at it, you know, so...
Yep, that's what I got too, about the same.
So, cause you're, cause we're, obviously, we're looking at the new pool, that's not a, a gimme, that's gonna be a lot of work to do that, and you're still even if things, if the timeline went well, you'd still be looking at three years, you know, so, you know, if, if we did not, did nothing with the pool now, would it, you know, would it be usable for three years? You know better than I would to get down there more, so...
I can't say. What it, the reason we're looking at new piping is, when we looked, we couldn't camera all the pipes, but the main lines are running and what's butting up against them is shifting. So there's our issue, is that we're not sure if those seals came loose, there's a possibility, uh when we had somebody come in and talked about, could be, there was some bad PVC glue that was used that's causing this. So it's, it's hard to tell, I, I don't know. Sometimes you're using lots of water, sometimes you don't, and sometimes it's based on the water level around the river, so...
But I haven't heard anything. It sounds like we have a, a list of the, like identified what it needs, but I would be curious on the cost and timeline of completion, because if we wait till twenty twenty-five, that's another year gone, that we don't know if we do it or not.
We've already pushed off.
Comes or doesn't, you know what I mean, like, you don't do it, you don't do it at all.
How would we, we'll get a contractor to do anything this summer?
I suppose the problem is, you gotta get a plan for it to bid, yeah.
Right, so it's like, can it be done, there's some how much, what's the timeline?
And you can do up to what we had proposed and get done what we can get done, but... You know, we can always open it up this year and get it done this fall, hopefully, or early spring. This year would have been good here to do it in the spring.
Can, can they get the engineers, get a list of things that need to be done, or where did, who?
The list is already done, the list is already done.
So they, they just use that to bid on? And what happens if we bid it?
We can always throw...
Are we?
We're not stuck with it, you could always throw up bids or rebid.
I guess I don't see a problem with bidding it, I guess, you're not gonna know where we're at, you know, if we get bids back and it's five hundred thousand dollars to do everything, it's kind of answers our question there, so...
Is that a motion to open it up for bids?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Dave to open up bids. And I'll work with Steve and um work on the bidding process. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next is the policy on vacation time.
Yep, um, the subject was asked to be put on tonight's agenda from the last meeting. It, currently, the policy states that employees can carry over a hundred and twenty hours from December into January of the new year. From what I understand, in discussions with public works, um, the commission allows until April first to put in writing a request to have additional hours paid out that they didn't use the year previous because of large snowstorms and big public work projects. Right now, in, enforcing the policy, um, it is on the calendar to inform all employees what their vacation hours are as of November first of each year, so if they know that they're gonna be accruing, you know, a certain, a certain number of hours, or if they haven't used enough throughout the current year, they have a short while to get them done, or, excuse me, to get them used. And if they don't, they do need to submit in writing to the commission a request to have the additional paid out per policy. Is there anything that you guys would like changed in that policy? It wasn't enforced in years past, um, and if you guys remember my interview, I appreciate policy, so...
And I think part of what the conundrum got into it was that we allowed comp time, but the comp time wasn't enforced, so it was what it's supposed to be, you could counter time, but it's, the policy says you're supposed to come to the commission for approval to get it as comp time. So if, uh, we had a big snowstorm, so that you worked eighty hours and you wanted to save up for a vacation, say to go to Disneyland, but you didn't have quite enough, you could use that comp time to, or if you wanted to go take it off for beet harvest and take off extra time. That was the intent of it, so that if somebody worked through a big snowstorm or another event, they could take their time off, but would do and not naturally just get paid out. But somehow there was that delay in approval, yes?
I don't, I don't think there's anything currently in the, in the boy camp about comp time.
I don't think there is either.
So if we want, if you wanna implement something, that would probably be a good idea.
Thought there was.
I didn't, I didn't notice it, I guess, and there's nothing in there about how much can be accrued as well.
Right, cause it had to come...
Yes, my question is, is the Department of Labor rules different for city government versus private or public entities, I guess? Because I know there's like rules about exemptions, like if you're an exempt employee, it caps off this, or then you don't, it's like different, like I know the Department of Labor's changed some rules over the last few years, but I don't know what they are at this current time, but I know there's like, what makes you exempt at what threshold and...
We should highly suggest that they, if they can use their vacation, because that's what vacation is for, you know? I, I realize if we have a series of snowstorms and, and water breaks and, you know, it gets to be an issue, but...
Well, we are talking a whole year, you know, we should, we can't be busy unless we're understaffed, we shouldn't be busy that whole year, so... Is there any problems with the way it's worked right now in the handbook? We can't follow it?
No, it just needs to be enforced.
I was gonna say, I think the thing is, it just hasn't been enforced, right?
That's correct.
I think that's all we need to do is enforce it.
That was part of the reason that I voted no last meeting when we voted on paying that stuff out, is I felt there was more information that would have been good to know.
Do we have to give more than, do we have to let them know, kinda give them a little update, you know, maybe in September, or, you know, give them a little bit of time, because November first doesn't give them a, a lot of time to, to plan to use it up, cause you gotta give them a little heads up that, hey, you know, you were sitting at, you know, here at the end of July here, and you've got all this, you know, is that, is that a problem to do, or is that easy enough to do?
That's easy enough to do, um, in addition to giving a heads up towards the end of the year, all employees are given, um, are given their vacation and sick leave banks with every payroll. So we, we always know where we sit, so it's right at the bottom of our base stuff. So, but we can, we can push it back to September first.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know how it is, it's just more of a, so that they're not, cause they're aware of it, so...
Yeah, it's on the check stubs.
Right. Just basically, right now, making them aware of the fact that this is gonna be enforced.
Here's where it is, it's under, it's under overtime, where it says, employees classified as an exempt may be eligible to receive overtime monetary or time compensation for the commission, with the commissioner's approval. The employees are not considered to be on a standard forty-hour work week, as our other city employees are expected to work if it is reasonably necessary to fulfill their job duties. So that's where they were banking their time, some were banking it on their own without the commission approval.
Is that, is that specific to comp time?
I guess it's called comp time, it could call it comp time, but it'd be anything, it's any overtime.
Do you wanna, do you wanna put in like a max that they can accrue in there for, for pay period of comp time?
Well, it'd have to come to the commission for approval that they could, cause I don't think they want it to be like... The intent when it was put in was so that if somebody, we had a, an event, and we had somebody put in a hundred and twenty hours of overtime in a pay period, they wanted to take it off later instead of getting paid, which we would allow that. It's not just necessarily that, yes, I'm gonna say this is, I'm not gonna take this as pay, so if, and it's supposed to be that they would submit it, so...
It's been kicked down the court multiple times. And then you unofficially, on the meetings, which I watched, requested that we be present. We were never formally requested that we be here to discuss this. So I'm pretty sure this is your discussion to have right now, not a conversation back and forth.
Well, with that being said, I don't, I don't see why we would, why we would pay that. You know, I don't know. But if we didn't do anything wrong on how we did it.
Because I think it's the dates and the timeline, August 7th lien, and that he was, he was still under that current ownership of William Block at that time.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying, that's why I'm asking. Is there something that we did wrong in this process?
I don't think so.
JR, is there any?
Don't they have to disclose if there's a lien against it at the sale?
I believe so. Is that correct, JR?
Yeah, that'd be with the closing company or whoever they did it with that.
It had not been certified at the time, so it didn't come up in a title search. But this bill was also applied to a parcel that receives no city utilities or services. It was divided equally amongst the five parcels. It had nothing to do with sewer connections, garbages. If you look at the utility bill, it's based off of 26. And if you look at the personal property taxes that the county sends out to the residents for their dwellings, that's easily obtained. So it's kind of shoddily put together, the way you put a lien on something that receives no utilities. But that would be under collection of utilities and services, 7.0102, is what JR sent the title on.
That's a question for JR. I don't know, I don't know what we did differently, so. I would have, I would have, I guess I would have assumed that the county would have said if we did something, something wrong or don't they?
No, the county says that it's whoever is certifying it, which would be the city. The county tries to take a hands-off approach because you're the one verifying it, not them.
Well, wouldn't it have been put on other four parcels then?
Correct.
You voted for that. You voted for it to go on all the parcels, so you should know that.
You have an email attached.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, if we would have put it on the four parcels, it would have still, it'd have still been the same dollar amount.
Right. It would have been an accurate execution of the municipal code. But it sounds like your attorney's not telling you if it's the way to be done or not, or if they think there's something inaccurately done. You ask them, you don't respond.
My response is, we did everything to the book. We certified it against the land owned by the person who did not pay. We certified against those parcels. I agree with Paul's comment, whether we did four out of five parcels or just all five, it's still the same amount.
Lots tracks in parcels receiving such utility or service? I got a lien on a parcel that receives no utilities or services.
Would you like us to transfer that dollar amount owed on that parcel to another parcel then?
Wouldn't you have to do it in another calendar year and certify it? Or you can just do it whenever you'd like?
Probably, we'd probably have to certify it in a year, but this changed the amounts.
Changes if it's accurate or not. So I, I mean, are you in the business of putting liens on property that have no services on them or are owned by somebody else? It's a little loose. Has this ever been done before? Have you put a utility lien on a property prior to this calendar year?
I don't think we've had any injuries that I've been here, except if, I've only been here for a couple of years, so. And we've been doing different ways to collect this in the two years I've been here. And this is what we brought up as a way to do it. And that's why we did it, because we were having no luck with other procedures.
I don't, was that a nor yet?
I couldn't tell you if it's the first time. You'd have to ask.
Is John Gilson here in official capacity?
No.
Or is he retired? Who's that?
That's the paper.
I couldn't tell you if it's ever, Dave would have a better shot than me, than me. He's been here longer than I have, so.
I don't remember. I just made many attempts with Bill Block.
Right, so we mentioned that too.
I made one and I got $4,000.
Yeah, we made one and we bought the trailer cart and we've been, you know, trying to bring it around, do some improvements, do some things, and you guys got a payment. Are you happy about that? Or, because it took us not 10-plus years to get a payment from him. And how many attorney fees have you guys collected from that, trying to pursue William Block?
Did you know of the, of the bill that was due? When you bought?
Not on, not on our, when we took over the trailer cart, our utilities was at zero.
Yeah, we got a fresh account from the city hall. The city hall started an account for us.
Did Bill Block disclose to you that there was money owed or did he say that he was going to take care of it?
He said he would take care of it. It's in the purchase agreement, which I tried to bring to the city attorney at your direction, and he basically left me out of it. I could spend more money fighting this than just paying the bill.
Do you have a title insurance that would cover this?
Why is that your concern?
Because it's not, if Bill said in the agreement that he was going to pay for it, it should be his.
That would be an agreement between Bill.
Not an agreement between him and us.
Right.
Did you say on a phone call as commission president that you wouldn't pursue us for the utility bills?
I had to bring that information up to the attorney.
I said, we would, our intent is not to pursue you. We would hope that Bill would pay for it. And when we put the lien on, it was not against you as an owner. It was put on against Bill Block and H. Borough Properties.
Right, so you should pursue him since you put it on for him. Would be our request. That's what we requested at the end of the email. And that's what we wanted you guys to discuss.
But if you and Bill made an agreement that he was going to take care of it, that would be another agreement between you and Bill.
Right, we wanted you guys to discuss this. We didn't want to be a part of your discussion on it, and we were never formally told to come to a meeting. And then every meeting we watched, it was said, oh, Wisneys aren't here. So now we showed up. We didn't want to have this conversation. We wanted to put it all out on an email so you guys had all the information you needed. You guys could discuss it.
It's a pretty shoddy execution of parliamentary procedure. Really is. I, I don't see what we did wrong, so I stand with Paul.
Any other commissioners have any other comments? Is there a motion to either accept or reject the letter? Or accept that we would forgive this or a motion to keep as is?
So how much, how much do you guys, how much is this going to cost you?
What do you mean?
As far as you, like, let's get it clarified, because I'm, are they responsible for what the rest of what Bill Block owes?
Correct. That's what you guys put as a lien on our property taxes.
But the balance had changed since this was certified, so.
Right, so we owe the whole $46,000 still on our property taxes. It hasn't been changed.
But I can access his utility.
Right, we can't access his account because we don't know any of those numbers.
And I didn't know it, and I didn't purchase it, so I, I'm not privy to the information.
Which we realized there was an error on getting it certified over once Bill made the payment, which is being remedied on the bill that's being, or the check that's being sent to the treasurer today.
To give you, don't mind me, just going to throw some numbers there. The bill that was certified in August was $41,243.97 altogether. The check Bill Block gave to the city was $24,630.55. After talking with the county, they would like a check cut to them to get it off of their books. They'll send it back to us. The balance on the certified amount is $16,613.42.
So that's all we're asking that you write off. Well below 50% collected more than that. You didn't pay a collection fee, which you discussed multiple times. You didn't have an attorney, have to sue them, which would cost you over probably 50 grand.
Go ahead, Melissa.
If I may, Melissa Beach, live at 603 Fifth Avenue, a local resident. Just wanted to weigh in on this a little bit. I've been following this issue in the newspaper for many years, probably as long as Dave's been sitting here, right? The collections. It's bothered me for a long time that it wasn't collected properly. But the question that I have tonight is, was the policy for disconnect followed? That would be question number one. And then the second was, I remember reading about another commercial utility bill in the newspaper that was not billed appropriately maybe and was written off. And that was done so in a kind of understanding that maybe the proper steps weren't followed on behalf of the city and also not wanting to, you know, frustrate a business. And I think this is a similar situation. These folks have multiple businesses in town. I'm not a relative of theirs. I'm just simply in the business of supporting communities and businesses locally. So my request would be that we write this portion off. I think I've watched it for 10-plus years with Bill Block not be collected and understand the reason for not always shutting it off was because we didn't want to impact, you know, the folks in the trailer port as well. But it's a difficult decision to shut anybody's utilities off, but that's the question, I guess, is was it properly disconnected as is with the policy?
This goes back a long way, so I couldn't tell you how it all went on the floor. And obviously, as you can see on some things, policy hasn't been followed. It's something we're looking at correcting. So, you know, I, I don't know. I guess it really is, it's in, I hate to put JR on the spot, but I guess it's really what his thoughts are. If we did something wrong, you know, I could, I could definitely see the fifth, the other one, it sounds like the fifth property that didn't have utilities, you know. I would be in support of removing that if you'd like. I would, I would probably entertain splitting it. I don't think I would entertain the whole works. I think that, you know, unless JR could tell us that we did something wrong, you know, I don't.
I think the wrong, the missteps were years ago, Paul. I'm not saying it's this commission by any means, but I think the missteps were that it wasn't collected before it got to $40,000.
And it wasn't, and, and I don't think it, for them either, it was something, it was new, it was uncharted territory, and they really didn't know, you know, how to do that, so. To me, it's, it's a learning, it's a learning thing that we, you know, the reality is, we've already put steps in place so something like this doesn't happen again, so.
Right, and that's what's important, is learning from it, right? Are we willing to cut our losses of $16,000? Because we have folks that are very heavily investing in the community through many other business opportunities and real property. That's what I struggle with. As an economic developer, I see communities that don't have folks investing because they're ticked off about things that have happened in the past. So to me, it's little to nothing to cut our losses, even though $16,000 is a lot of money. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
I agree with her. I, I, I've been thinking about this for a while, and, yeah, we've been fighting with Bill Block. And Brian and, you know, they've, they've come to the town and they've done a lot of good things. Got the trailer port fixed, the trailer port up and fixing some of this older property. They got a daycare in town. And I would just like to see it forgiven, just be done with it. How much more are we going to spend to finish this subject or just, let's just get rid of it?
Why'd we even put it on the tax thing then?
That's my opinion.
I think it should have been caught somewhere else. I don't know where the fault lies. We certified it, we did the procedures that we were supposed to. If Bill didn't disclose it, I assume that there is title insurance that would cover that bill.
We're leaving out the sue bill.
But if that came to where it wouldn't work?
Title insurance policy doesn't cover it because of the way that it was uncertified at the time. That's the answer to that question. It's considered a special, not a lien. The way that it was done, it wasn't recorded against the property, so it's put on the tax rule. I can send that email on if that's, you want proof to move forward.
I would like to see that. I think if that were the case, then possibly I would make a decision as to forgive it. But if, I think all avenues need to be.
This goes back a long ways, so I couldn't tell you how it all went on the floor, and obviously, as you can see on some things, policy hasn't been followed, it's something we're looking at correcting. So, you know, I don't know, I guess it really is, it's in, I hate to put JR on the spot, but I guess it's really what his thoughts are, if we did something wrong, you know, I could, I could definitely see the fifth, the other one, that sounds like the fifth property that didn't have utilities, you know. I would be in support of removing that, if you'd like, I would, I would probably entertain splitting it. I don't think I would entertain the whole works, I think that, you know, unless JR could tell us that we did something wrong, you know, I don't.
I think the wrong, the missteps were years ago, Paul, I'm not saying it's this commission by any means, but I think the missteps were, that it wasn't collected before it got to forty thousand dollars.
And it wasn't, and I don't think it, for them either, it was something, it was new, it was uncharted territory, and they really didn't know, you know, how to do that, so. To me, it's a learning, it's a learning thing that, you know, the reality is, we've already put steps in place so something like this doesn't happen again, so.
And that's what's important, is learning from it, right, are we willing to cut our losses of sixteen thousand dollars? Because we have folks that are very heavily investing in the community through many other business opportunities and real property. That's what I struggle with, as an economic developer, I see communities that don't have folks investing because they're ticked off about things that have happened in the past. So to me, it's little to nothing to cut our losses, even though sixteen thousand dollars is a lot of money. Thank you, appreciate your time.
I agree with her, I, I, I've been thinking about this for a while, and, yeah, we've been fighting with Bill Block. And Brian and, you know, they've, they've come to the town and they've done a lot of good things, and got the trailer court, fixing the trailer court up, and fixing some of this older property, we got, they got a daycare in town, and... I would just like to see it forgiven, just be done with it, how much more are we gonna Finish this subject, or just, let's just get rid of it.
Why'd we even put it on the tax thing, then? That's my opinion.
I think it should have been caught somewhere else, I don't know where the fault lies. We certified it, we did the procedures that we were supposed to. If Bill didn't disclose it, I assume that there is title insurance that would cover that bill.
Or leave it out to sue Bill.
But if that came to where it wouldn't work?
Title insurance policy doesn't cover it, because of the way that it was uncertified at the time. That's the answer to that question. It's considered a special, not a lien, the way that it was done, it wasn't recorded against the property, it's put on the tax roll. I can send that email on if that's, you want proof to move forward.
I would like to see that, I think if that were the case, then possibly I would make a decision as to forgive it, but if, I think all avenues need to be explored before letting something go that Bill Block owns on. Because ultimately, he was the person that did this. And that's, and that's what I told you, it's that it's Bill Block, I don't, didn't expect to come after all of you, but this is the procedure that we have to do it. And I assumed it would have gotten caught in the title insurance and everywhere else, just like anybody else would have had.
Levi, Brian, I'll just have a general question, I didn't hear the last meeting, but is there no other recourse for Bill Block? Now, nothing else that's possible to try to collect those dollars from him?
No. Not on the city side.
No, that's from the city's perspective, okay. I think, I think part of the learn, like Melissa just kind of feedbacked, she said there's a lesson to be learned with follow-up procedure and whatnot, but, you know, I'd be willing to bet that we probably don't have to worry about Whisneys paying the utility bill going forward, and they have invested a lot of money in the community and still continue to look for opportunities to try to make our community better, so I don't think this is gonna be an issue for them, where there's gonna be an outstanding utility bill that a commission is talking about in the future, and there can be, there can be some learning done here, but it just seems, seems like there should be another option to collect the money from who ran up the bill and pay it, and, and let them continue to invest in the community and try and make this place better. That's my thought.
And I would assume, you know, when I bought a house, I had to make sure that the property, all the bills were paid ahead of time, that's what I assumed was going to happen.
I think Brian, Brian mentioned that there's, you know, his title, the title insurance doesn't cover what was certifiable, so.
Levi, quick question.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim, I know you all know, every business I've ever run or been a part of, we always have a line item for bad debt, right, and when something goes bad, we turn it over to collections and we consider it uncollectible, is there an option, throw Bill Block, I mean, he's the hoagie man, right, we got that part down, send him to collections, maybe tries to rent a couch, he ends up, uh, has to pay that. You're hurt, you're scared.
Right.
Rent, rent a couch, can't rent a couch today, gonna have to pay that bill.
Is that an option?
We could still do it, collections could still sue him, the reason we didn't do it is we didn't wanna lose out, collections costs money, lawsuits cost money, this was the cheap guaranteed way to get paid.
Just think it gets paid by the wrong person, unfortunately, that's just my perspective. I realize that the city.
You also have to remember that when this was put on, we had no clue that the property was being changed.
Sure.
And when I called Brian, that was the first time I knew or had, and let you know that there was an issue, that we had did this, to make sure that was cleared up. That was the reason for the phone call.
Mark, are you talking about, you know, the person responsible paying for it, well, if you have, if you have a purchase agreement, wouldn't you have a right to go after them for that, or not?
Yeah, it'll cost fifty thousand, or at least twenty-five to go to litigation or something, it's not a, it'd take longer than to get to the next year of certifying, even Levi, just one more thing, just 'cause, you know, I can't stop myself, are we talking thirty, sixteen thousand, or thirty-two thousand, what's the math that?
Sixteen, six, thirteen, twelve.
There's more than that in that trailer park, and not asking for any help doing it.
You have your other businesses, so.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking specifically of that, you know, and I get that, over time, this should wash with the improved values and, and the, I just, I don't know if that's true, I don't know when you do the tax sequeelization stuff, but I'm sure Brian will have something to say about that, too. That's what they do. This is the way the game is played, you know. We don't have any real estate tax five-year breaks on any of our endeavors in town. Bill screwed you, can you recommend sixteen public employees? I could recommend that ad could be changed, instead of for a dollar amount be given to people, that we ask the community members to reach out to anybody they know that might be a qualified applicant, might split the middle ground around the other guy.
Everybody's trying to do the right thing, you know, and I just, I'm not trying to pick sides against the city, or, I just think they're trying to do the right thing, investing in the community and making it better, and I realize you guys got a job to do, too, to try to collect, collect the utility bills, so.
Ever heard of you?
I mean, I don't really have a dog in this fight, because I'm kinda new, I mean, I've heard about this whole bill for a while, and I don't have any doubts that they would pay their utility bills, that's not my issue, my issue is, what if this happens again, and it's, well, you did it for them, they can't do it for us. And it's like a tit-for-tat kind of thing, that always kind of rolls and goes, but I'm, like Casey, I'm a policy person, so I don't feel like we did anything out of the policy.
Have you read the policy, the chapter seven oh seven?
Purchase agreement is where, you know, where I have the issue, the purchase agreement was signed, and so it's like, it's a contractual agreement, but I, that's all I know, I don't know any more than that, like I said, I don't have a big dog in this fight.
Right, have you, I'm just asking, because you're about the policy, have you read the policy specific to it?
Specific to liens?
Yes, collection of utilities and services.
Not in collections and utilities, no.
Okay.
I'm just a, not that kind of pol, I'm the, purchase agreement was signed kind of thing, so.
Right, I'm, I'm going off of your policy, that if the policy isn't followed, to the T. in the first place, that this should never happen.
Well, that's, that's why I said I don't really have a dog in the fight, because I'm new, I don't, I didn't go that far back, I'm just here today.
Ultimately, you guys have to either decide if we're gonna move forward and forgive this, or if you're going to pursue other actions against Bill.
Can you make a second on this, to approve this?
There was no motion.
No, the, to go to the special assessment.
Evan.
Commissioner Evans.
What's that?
Can you vote on this, go into?
On the seventh, yes, because I knew it was still under William Block, I didn't know you guys purchased the property at the end of the month.
I see all sides of this, I really do, I, I respect, I respect everybody out there that's made their comments, and, you know, I, I do agree with, with Nicole, that, yeah, you set this precedence, and I guess it's not really a precedence, but I also feel that because of this, I'm, this never happens again, obviously, so, you know, so I, it doesn't, you know, I guess my thing would be is, is what, what other people wanna say, you know, as far as, yeah, you let them do it, you know, but I also understand the economic development side of it, completely, so. I guess I can make a motion that we forgive it, see if we get a second.
I'll second it.
Probably moved and seconded that we forgive the tax lien on the Borough Manufacturing Community LLC property, moved by Dave, or moved by Paul, seconded by Dave, is there any other discussion?
Can you make it all, the parcels effective, because there was that alteration to a lot
I guess I'm looking at the sixteen thousand, or whatever that she's got on here.
Right, okay, yep, that makes sense.
I just made one point of clarity, is I wouldn't use the term forgive, I would say you would release that property.
Release that property?
Because then if we ever did have the opportunity to take after Bill Block for the upsetting amount, we still would do so. In fact, I would say the second motion would be if this is the route, like we turn it over to collections and see if there's any chance.
Just clarify the motion, Paul.
Well, whatever he said.
At least you would like to release the property.
At least release the lien on that book.
Wait, the motion is to release the six properties, seven properties, from the lien for utilities, for the utility lien, is that correct? Is there any other discussion?
My perspective is, at best, we offer half, because obviously, we, there was a mistake made in the city, they made a mistake as well, they were given the information of what the dollar amount owed was gonna be, and they're trying to collect, and the guy promised him they were gonna pay him, so, to me, it's no different than if, and I understand the business, and I know they've done a lot for the community bringing stuff in, and I have no beef with them in any way, shape, or form, but if I go out and I purchase a property and it says that I owe this and that, am I gonna come to the city of whoever I bought it from and get forgiveness, or gonna say you, you went out and bought it that way? And that's where, that's where I'm torn, but I do understand that it is a perspective, and, and something that was well before a lot of our times, but I, I couldn't see doing any more than half. So, that's my discussion of that.
That's probably where I struggle the most, is the fact that, that they knew about it, they knew that the utility bill was there, and, that's where I struggle, if they wouldn't know anything about it, or if it was a matter of a lien crossing and didn't get posted, you know, and they never knew anything about it, and then just all of a sudden just popped up, you know, that's, that's, that's the one area that kind of bothers me, is that they were aware of it, and they're very smart people, so it's, you know, it's not like it's the first time they've done something like this, and that's, that's the one area that I, that I, I struggle with a little bit, is because they're very, they're very smart individuals, and, and I find it hard to believe that, that they would, that they wouldn't have made, held that back on the purchase, but I don't know, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know logistics on it, so.
Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
No.
No, no for me, motion fails. Would anybody like to make another motion? To forgive, offer to forgive half.
How would you do that, then, how would you want, that would be?
I would just.
So you're just making a motion to you'd forgive, did not forgive.
Release.
Release half, sorry, I keep.
So then we go after William Block for the other half?
We could go after him for the full amount still, it's still a debt owed by him, it's just we're giving up our security, so, basically, you're, you could ask the collections to take it on, right now, because he's sold, he doesn't have any assets in North Dakota that I know of, it'd be a very hard debt to collect, so if not, impossible.
Yeah.
And we could give it back if it was received from Bill Block.
I wanna see something done for these people, so I'm gonna make the motion, if we're gonna think about giving them at least half, I'll make the motion.
Motion to release, offer to release half.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Paul, is there any other discussion?
So there's late fees on this, could we do the half, but then take the late fees off of their half? So they're actually paying less than half of that, because the late fees are part of that?
If you would like to amend the motion that way.
That'd be feasible?
That's fine.
That would be, you know, his half is eight thousand, three hundred six, but if it's to take off the late fees, because I don't think they're, they should have late fees for that, so that would be.
So would you like to amend by adding, remove the late fees?
Yeah, remove the late fees up, or release, release half of the, the late fees off of their half.
Okay. Is there a second?
What does that come to? Just from my own notes, I'll second it, but I'm just.
So my math comes out to four thousand, three ninety-one, sixty-one.
Nine two.
Okay.
That's what they would owe?
The late.
The fees are four thousand.
Without the late fees, it'd be the forty-three ninety-one, yep, forty-three ninety-one. And that was from late fees that had accrued for quite a while.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Paul, to amend by adding, remove, to forgive the late fees. Or release the late fees.
I made the motion to do half, she amended it.
So we'll take a vote on the amendment first, is there any discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, amendment carries, we'll now take a vote, or if there's any other discussion on the main motion, that would now state that they would be released from half of, it would be released, and they would be half minus the late fees. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
How do we present that, how do they get notification of that?
I would assume best would be official notification.
By letter.
By letter, okay.
I'm sure Casey can do that, talk to the county.
I'll get you a copy of the letter, once it's finished tomorrow.
Okay, to clarify, you were to pay that amount, whatever it comes out to, minus the late fees, and the property will be released, and the remaining balance will be pursued in this ever. So the whole current balance will be released off the property?
Correct.
And then are you gonna pursue William Block for the whole amount, so that we could get reimbursed if he did pay the whole amount?
If there's a motion for that, which I was gonna ask for. Is there a motion to pursue William Block for the?
I'll take the motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Nicole, to pursue William Block for the full amount, and if we do recover, it would be split proportionately, whatever we receive, with Borough Manufacturing Community LLC. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Well, I was just curious how you're gonna go about doing that, try to do that for how long, and then what else?
My suggestion would be we turn it over to collections and have a collection agency
Would somebody like to amend by adding that in? Or we can have separate motions, whichever you pursue.
I'll make a motion with that added in.
So amend by adding? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul, moved by Jason, to amend by adding and sending him to collections, is there any discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries, amendment carries, we'll now take a, is there any further discussion on the main motion, that says that we will go after Bill Block via collections, and then split any proceeds with Borough Manufacturing Community LLC. Borough Manufacturing Community LLC? Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Anything else under this line item? Otherwise, I'll move on to new business. Next item is Greenway.
Greenway got ahold of the city office, and they wanted to know if the city would like to hire them again for weed spraying, I believe. Yes, if they... If you would like to have them spray again railroad park in the cemetery. It appears they've done it in the past. They would just like a yes or a no.
Have they ever reached out for bids on that? Because I know who's it, it's Mayville that does it. They're at the courthouse and other places.
Jacobson.
Who is it?
Jacobson.
Jacobson. Want to ask them if they'd be interested in it or get on it or...
Is that what the commissioner would like?
If that's what you like, that's what we can do.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
I think we should.
Okay. Put the spraying on?
Yep, put the spraying out to bids.
Would you like all properties included on that?
Whatever we've been doing. You've got to build those... The cemetery, if you want to go.
Park and cemetery, right?
Right.
That's what was mentioned in the phone call note, railroad park and the cemetery.
I just know we have some areas that maybe we should...
I think it should be all properties. If we're not capable of doing it, you know? I don't know. I don't know who does it on the city side. I don't know if the city employees do that or not.
Sometimes they do, depending on who has been licensed or not. Yes.
Behind City Hall is like a weed fest, so depends on her.
I think you could expand on that.
Because we have...
I think there's more areas.
I know that some of them...
It's your flower garden, so...
It's bad.
I know some of the employees have certification. I don't know if they all, because it is a commercial pesticide license they have to get in order to do it.
You could probably add the fire alarm to that property, too.
So...
Who made the motion? I did.
Paul, is there a second?
Second that.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole to have bid out for all city property.
Before you guys vote on it, when would you like bids to be handed in?
May first meeting.
Is that enough?
I heard May 1st. What'd you say?
Well, I think we want to start on the 1st, right?
Well, the... Whenever before the May 1st meeting is. I assume you went...
But my question, my addition on that is I'd give a company like that time to do that. I don't know how long it takes to put something together. That's a pretty big... People in that business, they can just look at it and they can tell you.
Well, that's one, two, one, two, three, four, five weeks, because our first meeting in May is on the 6th.
So could it be like 4:30 or 4:00 May 6th, and then open bids on the night of the 6th?
Or you could say on the 3rd, since that Friday. 4:30 on the 3rd?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? City cleanup week is our next item. We want to set a date.
When was... When has it usually been done?
Usually it's done the first part of May.
First part of May?
First Monday of May, usually?
Should be the week of the 6th.
Everything must be on the board by Sunday night.
Sunday night?
Yeah. That's usually how they do it, I think. So whatever day that is.
Somebody like to make a motion for that, or...
Make a motion.
Paul makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jason. Is there any other discussion?
My... You should... Just to make sure, should we make sure that's okay with the crew, that there's not people gone to schooling or anything like that that we don't know of?
We can double check with it before we run the odds.
Right, yeah. Just to make sure that... Because I hate to do cleanup and then nobody's around to pick it up, so... Because it might be, you know, then another... Because another thing that plays in that some, too, I think, is is when they get their summer help starting, too, that helps them a lot if they're around. So if a week delay helps them.
Are you okay with that if that...
If Jim's okay with it, if he has staffing, I don't have a problem with it.
But if they need to delay it a week, do you want to come back to the meeting? Are you okay with me, with us making the decision?
I think I'm okay with you making the decision, and I can amend that if you want me to, but I don't have any...
As long as that's kind of okay with everybody?
I wouldn't delay it if he passed.
So either the week of the 6th or the 13th. Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Does anybody else have any items? Any audience members or citizens have anything to address the commission?
Do you guys have the new mics working? Is that what those things are, or what?
Yep.
Where's the new mic system? Those little things? Why is this buzz back here the whole time?
It may...
Because then you can hear it on the, like, your live event. You hear the buzz in the background, like, the whole time, so...
That's supposed to be so that you... The audience can hear?
It doesn't really come across here. You don't hear anything back there at all. Yeah, you just hear you guys, like, there.
So then...
Doesn't... I can't hear you guys.
This just makes like a buzzing, like, early...
You're supposed to be able to hear back there, but I assume when we had somebody using it, might have got...
You don't have to look at it right now. I think maybe that should be something that you look at, like, after hours or a different time, but...
It's a great resource to be able to listen.
Because we watch on your live event, so I don't have to be here, so...
Usually we get texts when people can't hear, beginning today.
Paul, I think I can always hear you. But everybody else, it's hard to hear, so... And then this little noise in the background is really distracting, like, um, because I usually...
Yeah, we've been talking about that noise and we're never really... Because we're not out there, we don't even hear.
Right.
I don't even hear noise over there. Do you hear only?
I can hear it over here.
Yeah, see, I don't hear anything.
I can hear that, I'm deaf, I can't...
Sheila said that she could hear, but there's a lot of scratchiness, so I'm wondering if it's probably that. It's gotta be.
There was a meeting about a month ago that I didn't attend, because there was something more entertaining going on. But I couldn't hear for about the first 10 minutes, and then Levi, you went to the cabinet and adjusted a dial, and then the sound quality was vastly improved at that point.
I think the buzzing was still there, a little bit.
Part of it is, is we have people that rent out the facility, and then it gets changed, and...
We did try to play with it prior to the meeting today, but...
Can you turn that off to get the buzzing going away, or do you... It won't?
I think it's the mixer itself. Something where it's transmitting.
I thought it was like an air conditioner or something, or like the air.
That's what somebody said one time, too, but I don't remember.
That's what we had, that speaker up hanging in the ceiling. We got the air conditioner.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I do have two quick things, if that's okay.
Yep.
Inventory did load for me, so I just wanted to show you guys this real quick. Here's everything that has been put in so far. It's organized by tabs. Your city proper, this includes all of your sanitary sewer lines, water lines, main lines, anything out in the general public, along with the quantity in feet. The only thing that needs to be done is what the cost to replace all of these are. This inventory works double-sided. It works as A, inventory, and B, as a capital improvement plan. So you guys will know when you need to be replacing a lot of these items. Here's your public works inventory. If you see anything in red, that is what I need to double check on. This is in your guys' Teams folder, so you can poke around in it. I still need to update a few more things. Here's the Main Street Community Center. As you can see, a couple reds that need to be located. City Hall, a few more things just need to be found. The old shop is done. Pool inventory needs to be taken, and water plant needs to be taken. But here are all of your buildings and anything that was on an old insurance schedule. And then all of the vehicles, we need to double check on some of them. Some of them have gone to auction that were still on old inventory lists. So, yeah, so that's where I'm at with that. Once it's completely finished, I'll let you guys know. It should be done by the end of this month, though. So there's that. And then one other thing that I'd like to discuss with you guys prior to leaving, and I'm fine putting it on the next agenda, would be the dissolution of contracts for those who are in the... Not paying their utility bills. Per ordinance, you guys have a 30-day policy, and that's what we've been enforcing. We just had somebody today who got kicked out of their rental property, not with you guys, it was a different property. But they were on a contract per city policy, not $1,600, and they were on a contract just to get repaid. They owe their landlord about three grand, if I remember right, just in rent. So it's something that I will be putting on the agenda to discuss next time, just because it's not good to have anything like that. So this is going to be another situation that we're going to have to discuss. How do we collect on that 16 grand? What do you guys feel like? Or, excuse me, 1,600, 1,600, not 16 grand. 1,600. Not near as much as this, but still a decent amount of money.
I think we have policy in place, so that doesn't have to be annoying.
You guys, per your ordinance, it's a 30-day policy. That's what we've been enforcing going forward. But when I started, you guys were allowing contracts for anybody who had gone past that 30 days. There were quite a few accounts that had contracts or were given contracts because of those difficulties. It is more like babysitting.
Because we did enforce that policy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's become more of a babysitting job than it is having the bills paid. So that's something I would like to discuss at the next meeting. So that's... Those are the only two extra things I have. Thank you.
Anything else? Last thing is you guys will be getting an email from me with an evaluation sometime this month before the end of the meeting, or before the next meeting, if you choose.
It went very fast.
Felt like a lifetime.
Some days.
She's probably like, you're telling me.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.